I'd like to welcome you to the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty board meeting. It is five thirty P M. And I call to order the board meeting of this date. This meeting will be conducted in two parts. A special board workshop to review the district's strategic plans. We will begin the meeting right now with executive session. Upon the conclusion of executive session, we will begin the board workshop. This portion of the meeting, the workshop, will last approximately two hours. Upon conclusion of the board workshop, we will continue agenda items of the regularly scheduled meeting. I do know that we've had some people contact us about citizens' participation, and that will be in the second half of the meeting after the board workshop. So I just want to let people know it'll be just a little bit before we do that portion. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility purchase?
Madam Chair, move that the board enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one year, and a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility purchase.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous, and we are now in executive session. And I'll ask everyone to step out of the room, and then we'll call you back in when we've concluded. Thank you. Okay, Board, we'll go ahead and get started. And I am going to ask if you will give me the privilege of moving citizens' participation up. So we'll do, uh, we'll do seven point O. And then instead of reports and action items from executive session, we'll move citizens' participation there, and then we'll go back and move eight point O after that. Um, do I have a motion to make that move?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. It is unanimous, and we're gonna just, just move the agenda around a little bit. So at this time, Board members, you have received the minutes of the August fourth and the August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty board meetings. Other than corrections that have been received and made, are there any other corrections? Okay, hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. We're now gonna go to nine point O, and I'm gonna read the instructions, because there's some instructions, so if y'all will listen. Lexington County School District One's Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the board provides a citizens' participation period during each of its regular monthly board meetings. In order to speak, you must be a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, the parent legal guardian of a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, or a taxpayer residing in the Lexington District One attendance area. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs, and other matters. You may not speak about specific individuals, whether they're students or staff. And we want to remind you that this meeting is being livestreamed, this part I really want y'all to hear, and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. So I just ask, when you, if you are gonna talk about your own children, just remember that it is, it's live, it goes on the internet, and it never goes away. So just keep that in mind when you, when you do discuss things going on at your homes. We want to give everyone who came tonight an opportunity to speak. And in order to do that, the board chair will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern at the back of the room. The board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. This is your time to talk to us, so we're gonna be listening. You may address the board for up to three minutes. You will have three minutes. Please do not clap or make any comments, either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. That card asks for your name, address, and other information. Is there anyone who wants to speak that did not fill out one of these and wants to speak? However, we will only read out your name and the town you reside in and the schools your children attend when it's your turn to speak. If you did not fill out a card but wish to speak, please hold up your hand, and someone will give you a card. We already discussed that. Anyone who is uncomfortable addressing the board in person may reach out to the board by email, telephone, or mail, and our contact information is available on the Lexington One website. And we welcome all messages. And I just, um, would like to take the time, since we're virtual, to thank all the people that have emailed us this past weekend. I want to thank all the teachers, um, who used their voice and spoke to us and let us know their true feelings. And we did hear from a handful of parents, but we, we heard from numerous, numerous, numerous teachers, and we welcome that you felt, uh, that you wanted to share those messages with us. So at this time, I am going to call on Ms. Meredith Tosh Candy. She is going to discuss returning five days face-to-face. She lives in Columbia, and what, uh, do you have a child in our district? Okay, she's a teacher. Where do you teach? Pillion High School? Well, great. Welcome. We're glad to have you. So go ahead, Ms. Tosh Candy.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Board members, and Dr. Little for allowing me to speak today. I am a teacher here in Lexington One, and I am here to advocate for our teachers and staff. I know many parents are encouraging five-day return face-to-face. I will never criticize a parent for advocating what they believe is best for their child. That is their job as parents. However, my parents can't come here today to advocate for what's best for me. I have to advocate for myself and my colleagues, or no one else will. As a teacher, I want students back five days a week more than anything. Do you realize how difficult it is to teach orchestra virtually? But science, data, and research are telling us it is not safe to do so yet. And here are three names to prove that point. Ms. Demi Bannister, Coach Charles Peterson, and Mr. Wendell Smith. These are three educators in our state, two of which are from the Midlands, that have already lost their lives to COVID while serving in their schools. And this is just from the past week alone. None of their districts are back five days face-to-face, either hybrid or one hundred percent virtual, and there have still been three deaths. Here is what Dr. Teresa Holmes, the Vice Chair of Richland Two School Board, said in response to the death of Ms. Bannister. How would you like it to be your family member that did not survive? I know people are wanting schools to be open. I know they're saying, oh, it's mostly survivable. But what if it was your loved one, or one of your family members, or your child? These deaths can be greatly reduced and avoided. Our current hybrid model protects the lives of faculty, staff, students, and families exponentially more than five days face-to-face when social distancing will become impossible. Our current hybrid model is working. We aren't seeing a huge spike in cases, and our students are still learning. Many of my students have expressed that they prefer the hybrid model because they are receiving more individualized instruction. This is not a race. My parents used to read Aesop's Fables to me, and one in particular comes to mind, The Tortoise and the Hare. Who won that race? Was it the swift hare or the patient tortoise? Slow and steady is the pace. Slow and steady wins the race. When a member of the Lexington One family dies, and I am intentionally saying when and not if, will the race to five days face-to-face have been worth it, worth the death of even one person? This is a case of prioritization. Is the greater priority being the hare and racing to face-to-face, or being the tortoise? Taking things slow and steady to protect the lives, health, and well-being of our greatest resource, our faculty and staff. I please ask that you consider to re- retain the hybrid model for the foreseeable future for the safety and well-being of our faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tosh Candy. Okay, we are now going to go. We are now gonna go to Ms. Emily Homer Conrad. I'm sorry, I can't read it. Emily Homer Conrad. Um, she lives in, what, what town?
Lexington.
Okay, she lives in Lexington, sorry. And she has children at Pleasant Hill Middle and Pleasant Hill Elementary, and she is going to be discussing five-day face-to-face. So Ms. Homer Conrad, go ahead, please.
I first want to say that it's not that I don't believe that the virus is here. It is. I have, like I said, like she said, three children. I have one child in middle school and two at the elementary school, kindergartner and a first grader. This hybrid model has been proven before that it doesn't work, and the online model has been proven before by two thousand and eleven report done by the Center of Research and Educational Outcomes that was done in Pennsylvania charter schools proved that the children that did online learning were very far behind those that were in-person face-to-face. Now, I understand that there were recently teachers that had passed away, but those teachers were at schools that were online and had not gone face-to-face. I think that this virus is already predominant in our community everywhere. And yes, there are productive measures that we can take by wearing masks and such, and we have taught our children that since March when the pandemic started. But this going hybrid model leaves our children only in school two days out of a five-day week. And some weeks, it's only one day, so they're not really learning. And it's shown that kindergartners and first graders can't learn by videos sent to them through PowerPoint slides. There's no way. We're gonna leave a whole generation of children behind, and that generation of children is gonna cause lifelong impact on not only our economy, but also on those of you that may rely on those children to help take care of our citizens. We cannot leave these children behind. If we forget them in kindergarten, first-grade years, and the elementary-age years when it's most, it's most important for them to learn the basics of reading and writing and math that they have to learn face-to-face, and you just forget about them, then we're gonna have a huge community at a loss. And not only will that affect our economy, that'll affect the economy of Lexington County because you're gonna lose a lot of citizens if we don't bring the students back five days face-to-face. And you're also going to cause, you know, parents, myself, I've lost a job because I have to home teach and, um, and also, you know, take care of kids now that I wasn't planning on before. The private schools are packed. We've called many parents, have tried to get our children into private schools because they're offering five-day face-to-face, but they don't have room now. And so now we're at a loss, and we're having to teach our own children, which we weren't planning on back when all this started last March. So that's one of the things that I wanted to say.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Homer Conrad. We appreciate you coming tonight. Um, I'd like, like to call on Ms. Ashley Lewis. Um, is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Ms. Lewis, is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Is it in Lexington? Okay. She is Ashley Lewis. She is coming to us from Lexington. She has children at Lex- Lake Murray Elementary and at Beechwood Middle. So Ms. Lewis, and she's gonna be discussing five days face-to-face.
Got it. Hello. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, my name is Ashley Lewis. I have a daughter in elementary school and a daughter in middle school. I'm here today for, for them to show them I will do whatever it takes to ensure their future and to demand they begin to receive the education they deserve and that we have all come to know and expect from Lexington School District One, the best district in the state. We are truly blessed to have such amazing schools and teachers in our community. With that being said, our kids need to get back to school five days a week face-to-face. Lexington One administrators have had since March to figure out how to get students safely back in the classroom five days a week, just as other districts in our state have done and are doing, and yet here we are. Everyone is back at work. Daycare workers have been working five days a week throughout the entire pandemic, along with all essential workers. Parents have had to work five-plus days a week to pay bills and now extra childcare costs. Imagine what life must look like for single parents today. Because every day kids aren't in school, we have to pay someone to keep them. Parents have been paying and watching someone do the job schools are telling us they can't do since March. Meanwhile, our tax dollars are still going to schools, and district employees continue to receive their regular salaries for our children to receive less than half of their education in regular face-to-face instructional time. We know the numbers concerning this virus. We've all heard them. The sacrifices we're making and the repercussions this will have on our children do not reflect the risk. A quick Google search of documented transmission from student to teacher will yield little results. In the entire world, it is difficult to find a single case of this happening anywhere. That is because, and science confirms, that children are far less susceptible to this virus than adults. They are far less likely to contract and therefore far less likely to transmit COVID-nineteen than any other age demographic. Where is the outbreak at the daycares that have been open this whole time? Schools closed down, and kids started going to daycare. As long as teachers and staff follow protocol, just as they've been doing and continue wearing their masks, along with every single student in the school, it won't be an issue, just like it hasn't been for our daycares. Lastly, I've witnessed a lot of concern for the vulnerable and at-risk in our society, and I share those concerns with you, which is why I believe that those families with children or relatives in high-risk categories should be given the option to be one hundred percent virtual. Let people decide what is best for their families. It's either one hundred percent face-to-face or one hundred percent virtual, but one foot in the door and one foot out the door simply isn't working and cannot continue. It is not sustainable, not for the hard-working members of our community and not for our children. It is time Lexington School District One recognizes the true victims of this new normal, and they are not the teachers, not the administrators, and not the members of this board. They are our children, your students, who are active, who you are actively depriving of structure, socialization, growth, and equality education, who miss their friends, who just want to go back to school, who say virtual learning is hard. And we won't stop fighting until they get back because we are their parents and we know it's best for them. We will do whatever it takes to make our voices heard, even with masks on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay. I'm now gonna call on Caitlin Barbosa. And Caitlin is, is, um, I don't know what city she lives at either. None of you ladies live in a town. Lexington, she lives in Lexington. She has a child at New Providence and one at Lexington Middle School, and she wants to talk about back-to-school face-to-face. Ms. Barbosa?
So my name's Caitlin Barbosa, and I'm here today to advocate for my family being in favor of five-days face-to-face. I was told that parents wanting five-days face-to-face were the minority, and that we were just making our voices louder than the majority. I hope that today even my loud voice alone matters. This is just an original post from the Politics of Parenting dot com, but it sums up better than anything I could have written on my own. I've talked to many, many parents from many different Facebook groups in multiple counties and districts who all feel the same way. Dear school administrators, board members, or decision-makers, it has been a couple weeks of this virtual learning, and I'm here to tell you it is not working, and we are not okay. I know you're doing the best you can. Most of us don't feel that you are because we don't feel heard, let alone doing the best that you can. Have you experienced virtual learning, like really sat in a home with family struggling to make this work? Have you witnessed the meltdowns of both students and parents? The fights and frustrations of not understanding the day's agenda, or math lessons, or technology failures? The onset depression kids are experiencing due to sitting all alone? Have you sat in the home of families with multiple kids only to see every child eat lunch alone, have recess alone, have snack alone? It's absolutely heartbreaking, and I feel held hostage in my own home. I cannot make my kids, who's calling me right now? I cannot make my kids take them on a bike ride or to the park or for recess on a picnic for lunch because every child has a unique schedule. Help me understand why all families are expected to be flexible with virtual learning, yet we cannot have a one-hour lunch break school-wide. If you have not witnessed this, then I beg you to stop telling us that you understand and start listening. Parents know what is best for our children, and we're gonna fight to make things right. Children belong in school together every day. Virtual learning was supposed to be an option to families that felt unsafe re-entering schools because this can remain an option, live, in-person. Education is the only option for many of us, especially those with us full-time jobs. Parents are not meant to be the teachers, social workers, and principals in our own homes. Teachers are not supposed to work twice as hard to make half the difference with the same pay. Let that sink in, because if you truly feel that children are getting the same education virtually as they would in-person, you do not deserve a seat on the board and should immediately be banned from working in the school education system. Stores are open, daycares are open, restaurants are open. The fact that schools remain closed is baffling. Are you aware that preschools are open? Little boys and girls who are absolutely adorable with their Paw Patrol masks. But I ask, have you been around many three- or four-year-olds lately? Because they are the most disgusting humans out there. Their sleeves are now Kleenexes. They'll pick gum off the bottom of a picnic table and chew it, and then share it with a friend. They're gross, absolutely adorable, but gross. And yet they're in school, and to your surprise, doing just fine. Great, actually. Preschoolers and daycare children are doing just great. If they can manage, I have faith that you would have confidence in our older children as well. Because regardless of your intentions with virtual learning, it's not working. And again, we are not okay. Families are not okay. We are not okay with watching our children's education progress, progress, regress, rather than improve. We are not okay hearing our kids calling themselves stupid when they do not understand something. We are not okay with our children with IEPs and five oh four plans like mine, who are not receiving their accommodations. We're not okay with our children losing social, social and emotional health over fear of a virus. Have you ever tried to teach a child how to hold a pencil properly on Zoom? No, it's not working. Do you realize that students have once left school crying each morning, absolutely hating their new normal? Put your political agendas aside. Let our personal physicians decide what is best for our health while you do your job and do what is best for your district. And in those final decisions, and you're, if you're on the fence, just remember, we are not okay, teachers are not okay, Lexington District One families are not okay. We are stronger together, five days face-to-face.
Thank you, Ms. Barbosa. Okay, I'll now call on Brittany Little. And Brittany is a resident of Lexington, and she has a child at, at the Pleasant Hill School, Pleasant Hill Elementary, I think. So Brittany?
Hey, how are you? Okay, I don't have a speech planned today. Um, this is just a story. This is my story. Let me start off and say that, um, I moved into Lexington School District One for a reason. I spent thirty-five thousand dollars extra on my house for a reason. It was because of the school district. That was the reason. Um, with that being said, I agree with what y'all say that, you know, virtual does work for some, virtual does not work for all. The reason why is I'm a hairdresser. I spent twenty-five thousand dollars on my education to go to school. I work my butt off. I work sixty hours a week, five to six days a week, ten, ten to twelve-hour days, eight to ten clients a day. Don't wear a mask, although I understand the reason for the mask. With this being said, um, my situation is very unique because I, I make most of the money for my family. Um, with this situation happening, um, I have a fourth grader, a kindergartner, and a one-year-old. I plan my kids out on purpose so that I would not have to pay for two kids in childcare. This is the reason why I did this. With this situation, it is forcing me to have to pay an extra seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to pay for this extra child in childcare, which I am putting them through daycare because it will not work for me. If, the situation, thank God, my daycare does a five K program, because if not, I would be completely, there's no way I could do it. Because with me not working those three extra days during the week, there's no way I could afford my car payment, or my house payment, or food to put on my table, or anything else. Um, so I am working the full five days. Um, thankfully, my, my daughter, my oldest daughter, um, is doing the virtual days with her father, who lives in Fort Mill, which is also another issue. Um, I'm having to drive my child on Sunday afternoons to Fort Mill and back on Tuesdays. So my child is being forced out of her home, which she has not ever been like that. She's been with me for nine years, um, which now she is being forced to be with her father, which is great. I mean, he's, you know, it's not an issue, but it's just, it's a situation where it's pulling her out of the home, and it's making it very difficult for me as a mother to, to do all of this together. Also, hold on, I got bullet points, but not, not a speech. Thing that I don't understand is a hundred percent of the parents send their kids to school every, you know, a hundred percent of the parents that send their kids to school, they don't believe that COVID only exists on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday when they're sending their kids to school on Monday and Tuesday. It makes no sense. If you're gonna send them two days, send them five days, because for the parents that can't do this, I, I can't afford it. I can't do this every, you know, I can't do this forever. I can't afford it. I'm pulling money out of savings left and right to be able to afford to put this kid in daycare. I feel like if you want to stay virtual, stay virtual. It, it works out. You know, you've got teachers that you're paying to do virtual, you do virtual, and then other students, you know, you go to school five days. It doesn't make sense to me. Um, also with this being said, my fourth grader started a new school this year. Um, she has come home crying because she cannot make friends because she is six-foot distancing between all of her classmates. She cannot talk to people. She can't socialize. She can't do anything because she's stuck six feet distancing with a mask on. It's making it very impossible for me as a mother to handle all of this, as well as work and do everything together. So that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Okay, I'm gonna call on Alexis Skabinski. I think she is a repeat. We've had her before. And she lives, let's see, you live in Lexington, right? And she has a fifth grader and a first grader at New Providence. So Ms. Skabinski?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me once again. I was here last month, um, advocating for my son, both my children, who both have IEPs. And I'm here again to advocate that, or to say that a lot of my fears have come to fruition. They're, this hybrid schedule is not working. It's not working for my special education children, and it's not working for us as a family unit. I'm a single mom. I work full-time, and I go to school full-time. And I can't drop out of school because I'm utilizing VA benefits to close the gap that I have with our bills. So I go to school full-time. I'm a mom full-time, a single mom full-time. And, excuse me. I'm working twice as hard to educate my children, something that this district should be responsible for. I got to my kid's daycare today, and my son had none of his assignments done. And I didn't know who to take that frustration out on. And I unfortunately took it out on my six-year-old. Why didn't you do your homework? But that's not his fault. It's not the daycare's fault. The daycare is not being paid to be a teacher. They're, for the most part, high school, high school seniors or college students, they're not teachers, but we're expecting them to do the job of a teacher without the pay. And now I get to go home at nine-thirty at night stressing, is my son gonna be marked absent for today because we didn't have his assignments done? And as a first grader, we have an assignment for seventeen minutes of writing. I mean, to me, that seems completely unrealistic, but I'm not a teacher. Our, our first graders are really sitting in front, in a classroom, writing for seventeen minutes. My son can't even read a book. That's what his IEP is for. It's for reading, intervention. So I'm at a loss as to what to do, and I'm really frustrated. My children need to be back in school a full five days, period. This two-days-a-week schedule is not working. And my children have been in daycare since June. They, our daycare has had one, one COVID-nineteen case. We shut down, and, and not a single other teacher or child tested positive for the virus, and everybody had to be tested before returning back to daycare. So I haven't found a single case in any, in any state in the country in which there was a daycare outbreak. If daycares are able to manage to stay open, I, I don't understand why Lexington One can't figure it out. I understand the complications with a middle and a high school, but that an elementary school with twenty kids in a classroom, when their daycare has forty, there's no reason it shouldn't work out. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit off today. I'm just, I'm tired. I average four hours of sleep right now between my schoolwork, my children's schoolwork, and stress. You're really affecting this. I, I need my kids back in school.
Thank you, Ms. Skabinski. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call on, is it Charis Pew? Charis, is that the name? Okay, Charis Pew. Um, she lives in Lexington, and she has, let's see, ooh, you've got all kinds here. You've got a first, a third, and there's maybe twins, been fourth grader at Pleasant Hill Elementary?
Yeah.
And you want to talk about the challenges of hybrid learning. So go ahead, Ms. Pew.
I just want to start off by saying I appreciate you guys. I know that you have worked nonstop since this started, and I do appreciate it. Listening to this whole meeting, I would say that you've got a great plan in place. I really do. But I would like you, I would like to invite you guys to my house on a virtual learning day so you can see that plan in process. I have four children in the virtual learning plan, one school-issued device. Even though I said I needed four, we have one. There's a waitlist. I understand that. But there's security protocols on that child's device that I can't access. I can't email him his slideshow to use his device because of the security protocols. He doesn't have his work assigned on that device because the other kids in his class don't have devices. So that device that the school has given me to help is useless. I've always encouraged my kids not to use tablets, but here, here's a Kindle that I bought in two thousand and fourteen. Guess we're gonna do school on it. I don't have a wireless that is strong enough to do four kids on four devices at the same time. I work fifty hours a week. My spouse now works two days a week so that he can help me homeschool the kids. We've got two parents all day long on our virtual days working with four kids on four different devices that may or may not work. If we get it working, the slideshow won't load. Or there's a Seesaw app that tells me my kid has an assignment on there. So I have to log on to the Seesaw app, which shows there isn't an assignment. Or there's a Seesaw app that tells me my kid has an assignment on there, so I have to log on to the Seesaw app, which shows there isn't an assignment. So I have to email the teacher, who after three days has not emailed me back. Is he gonna get marked absent on those assignments? This is just one kid. The videos won't load sometimes. Sometimes they'll send us to a password-protected site without the password. So you email the teacher and ask her the password, and she tells me to restart my device. How does that help with a password-protected device? I'm a nurse. I've been working with COVID since day one in the ICU. I was scared. I get it. I know you guys are scared too, but we have got to go back. You guys are essential, more so than I am, in education. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna call on Robert Christopher Rice. He wants to talk about reentry, and he lives in Lexington. He has a child at Gilbert High School. Mr. Rice?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, and District Staff for just giving me the opportunity to speak before you. We are all in unprecedented times, and I think we've heard from tonight that we're all suffering. Everybody is suffering in some type of way, and so I want to be one of the first people to just thank everybody who's been involved with this effort ever since March, whether it's the Board, the District Staff, the school staff, the teachers, for your hard work and your time and your effort that you put in. I don't think that should be taken lightly, because even though you've put in all that hard work, you're suffering also, but you're still putting in that hard work. But what I do want to do is I want to urge the Board and also the District to continue to consider the feedback that you're getting, like you're hearing tonight, like you're getting from emails. Consider the feedback from the parents, the teachers, and the community leaders, whether it's face-to-face or whether it's hybrid, and do your best to be objective and not just decide based on how you feel is one way or the other. There are always two sides to a coin, and I think we have to make sure we're looking at both sides and trying to make the best objective decision that we can. Also, I recommend that we take advantage of the learnings that maybe some of the other school districts that started for face-to-face. I know, like Batesburg-Leesville has K through five going face-to-face now. So maybe we can glean some information from them in terms of how's that working for them. I guess of all things that I would say, I want to encourage the District not to make decisions in a vacuum. One of the worst things we can do right now is make a decision in a vacuum without the input and without the feedback. So I know it's a tough decision. I know y'all have tough decisions. I mean, it's what I call a third, a third, a third. No matter what decision you make, a third will be in favor, a third will be against it, and a third will be somewhere in the middle. And they may sway from one side to the other. But I think we just need to have grace towards each other. We need to communicate with each other and not make those decisions in a vacuum. I advise the District, I know this is kind of more of a district decision, but District, please listen to your Board members. Your Board members are being bombarded with emails, and phone calls, and Facebook messages, and everything. So they're basically getting grassroots information from the field. So Board members, please speak up and tell the District what you're hearing. And I think what we've got to do is have the Board and the District partner together and make the best decision. And my last and final point is, whatever we're deciding, whatever we're discussing, the data we're looking at, everything we're talking about as a District, as a Board, communicate, communicate, communicate. If there's one thing you can do during these uncertain times where everybody is suffering, the best thing you can do is over-communicate. Communicate so people know what's going on, what's being considered, and what are the thoughts that are going into the decisions before the decisions are made. So communicate, communicate, communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Board? You're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, you're welcome to leave. We probably have a good bit left, so, but if you want to step out, that's fine. We don't mind at all. And we really thank all of you for coming and sharing with us tonight. We appreciate hearing from everybody. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna move, we're gonna go back to 8.0, which is reports and action items from executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve six certified recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move the Board accept the six certified recommendations as recommended by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team for the 2020-2021 academic school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve one administrative recommendation for the 2020-2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move the Board accept the one administrative recommendation by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team for the 2020-2021 academic school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and once again, it's unanimous. We now are going to talk about a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility. Do I hear a motion that the Board accept the Administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of two pieces of property per an agreement dated February 19th, 2020, with Royal Properties LLC and Royal Holdings One LLC?
Madam Chair, I move the Board accept the Administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of two pieces of property per an agreement dated February 19th, 2020, with Royalty Properties LLC and Royalty Holdings One LLC. The properties are known by Lexington County as TMS number 00549807015, and TMS number 00549807014. The consideration for this property is $1,500,160. This total equates to $32,000 per acre.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, we now have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Salters. He'll walk us through this property purchase, and then we'll open it up for questions and discussion. Mr. Salters?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm just gonna give you a brief highlight of the property. As you recall, in the 2018 bond referendum, one of the duties we were tasked to complete was to relocate our bus transportation facility, the Lexington Hub. And so, some considerations when doing that. We're looking for a piece of property to be able to do that. We're looking for a central location to be able to consolidate Lexington River Bluff and White Nile service areas into one service area to get some economies of scale. Currently, the White Nile buses run off of the White Nile High School property, which is obviously very busy, and we certainly can use the space at White Nile High School as we continue to expand that facility with 32 classroom addition and a performing arts center as well. The property consideration with this particular piece of land, it's roughly 4.1 miles from White Nile High School, 6.9 from Lexington, and 8.7 from River Bluff. Ideally, we would look for an industrial area, which this property is located in. It's primarily because our buses and the disturbance that they potentially cause early in the mornings with startup, sometimes as early as 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. And obviously, we want good site distances for our employees and buses to have safe access to our facility. And just a quick rundown, we have 190 state buses currently in the District. We've actually, over the last two years, including this year, have received 11 new buses from the state. 10 of those buses will be located or operate out of this proposed lot, so that's 152 buses. And then, we have 21, back in, if you go back to 2016, we had 21 district-owned buses, activity buses we use for field trips, ball games, that kind of thing. And we have increased that number to 49. That number had been 21 for a number of years, and as our schools grew, even when we opened River Bluff High School and kept bringing on middle schools, we didn't keep up with the number of field trips and activity, sports activities that were going on. So we focused on that over the last few years. That number's at 49. So we anticipate a total of approximately 196 buses will operate out of this lot, and of course, the associated employees will park at this lot as well. So it's, you know, close to 400 vehicles on this lot at one time. This is our current facility. You've got Highway One up here, and Bar Road runs this way. And we are co-located with the Lexington Area Maintenance, Bus Maintenance Facility, and this is a zoomed-in view of that facility. This is the Lexington-only buses, so the White Nile buses are a similar size and group. And so this area down at the bottom here is the Lexington group, and then this is the state maintenance operation. And so we run basically out of three portable classrooms that are circa 1980s, maybe even the 70s, and are not adequate for the resources that we need to use there. Looking at the piece of property that we're proposing, this is obviously I-20. You can see here, so this is, you know, South Lake Drive. We've got Two-Not's Road that runs here. Mission would be back in this area back here. And so we have access, you know, across Two-Not's, back over to the Lexington attendance area. We've got access over to the River Bluff attendance area, either via the interstate or several of these back road connectors here, and obviously, the White Nile community right here on South Lake. And the property is adjacent to, this is the Bentley Pond Toons. There's a large joint municipal water tower. It's actually right underneath that arrow. Here's a zoomed-in view of that property. The first track is this little area right here, which provides us an ingress to the property with good sight lines and visibility. And then we have two other egress points. It's actually a little skewed. That line should be, you know, more straight there, and so that will be a future access point. We're proposing to use this as our egress point for the traffic. And you see the topography, so the property generally slopes from right to left on this view, and feeds down into a draw here, a wetland area, which is delineated here. Approximately two and a half acres of wetland that we will not disturb as part of the development of this proposed building and parking areas. This is a rendering, kind of a 3D modeling of the facility and the driveway access to it. Again, the main entrance would be here, employee out in the front of the facility. Our buses would have the opportunity to drive to the rear of the facility. We will have some fueling stations. We do have some propane buses, and we also obviously have diesel buses, and they will have fueling stations along in this area, covered fueling stations. And the parking lot is designed so that they can, you know, make their way to the back and then easily feed into these parking bays. And then, an exit bay here. All of this asphalt will be heavy-duty asphalt, which is required for our buses to maintain integrity of that surface with the frequent driving and turning that'll occur. And then the building itself will be more centrally located here. And this is a shot of the front elevation of the building. It's very similar in layout to our current operations building. We kind of modeled it after that. And we have office spaces in the front of the building, and then in the rear of the building. Operations, we have a large warehouse. In this scenario, we have mechanic bays and wash bays for our drivers to maintain our bus fleet. This is a schematic layout of the proposed office areas here in the front. We've got some flex space here in the middle, much like we do at our operations facility. A training staff development space here, seating for about 100 people. We're proposing four mechanic bays, and then four wash-down bays. And these will be covered bays. This is just a rendering of what the staff development room might look like from a, you know, 3D modeling perspective. There's a conference room in the front, and you can see the flex space kind of opened up in the back there. And this is that flex space, what it could potentially look like, all the way down to the Lexington One mission statement on the wall. And then, just to recap again, this is the location of the property. And, you know, I would just remind you that, you know, our process is, you give us, you know, through a formal action, you give us the authority to go seek out property, which you did. Then you enter into an option agreement, which you did. And you then authorize us to get appraisals on a piece of property. And we have 90 days to ratify a price on that property, which we did. And that's where the $32,000 an acre came from, based on two independent appraisals. And this would be the final vote that you would take to move to close the property, and we'd actually move about purchasing it. And should you take that vote this evening, we will close the property as quickly as possible and start the process of permitting with the county, and get a land disturbance permit as quickly as we can, and go ahead and get construction underway with the goal of being open for next school year, operating off of this facility. Happy to answer any questions that you may have related to it.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Salters?
I have some discussion. First off, thank you all for getting us the due diligence on Friday. I appreciate not getting that the night of the meeting. With that being said, I have read every single page inside of this binder. There are a couple of items I'd like to point out to the Board. Originally, we were told we needed between 15 and 20 acres. The District brought us one parcel of land for 44 acres and an additional parcel for 2.61 acres. Nothing has changed. We still only need between 15 and 20 acres. As a matter of fact, the site layout shows us that less than half of this land will be used. The property listing says it can be subdivided, but yet we aren't. As for the 2.61 acres, page after page in this binder talks about recognized environmental conditions. So much potential contamination existed that additional assessment of the site was warranted. There's documented contamination on adjoining property, and the surrounding property has land use restrictions consisting of no residential use, no groundwater use, no agricultural use, no childcare or elderly care facilities, and no school use. All of that information was in a report dated July the 8th. A few weeks later, in a report dated August the 20th, after additional assessment of the property was done by the same agency, they revealed that surprisingly, there was no evidence of USTs, underground storage tanks, septic tanks, or water supply wells. But a few weeks earlier, they, and I'm quoting here, "We observed multiple water supply wells on the subject property. We observed two vent pipes likely associated with former underground storage tanks that were utilized at the Kaiser Grocery Business. And according to the property owner, a septic system is present on the subject site, although they could not locate the septic system." The original report also included pictures of the vent pipes, one water supply well, and a view of the septic connection. Why are we, as a Board, spending all of this money on a site that only serves as a driveway? I know we were told DOT said we needed it, but DOT also said that we had to have two entrances for the land on Old Cherokee for Lexington Middle School. But when that wasn't possible because one parcel of land fell through, we made it work with one entrance. Even so, when a price couldn't be negotiated, the District went back and asked the landowner to purchase just enough land for a driveway. There's no reason why that can't be done here as well. But if y'all are just insistent on buying additional land for a driveway, there's a lot for sale right next to the driveway in the layout. And that landowner, from what we discussed earlier, has not been contacted, and that land has not been discussed. So if that isn't enough to convince you that we don't need the additional 2.61 acres, in addition to documented environmental hazards, we can add demolition and cleanup fees because they're abandoned. hazards, we can add demolition and cleanup fees because there are abandoned homes and hazardous substances on site, and oh, let's not forget, a business and a home. We would be bulldozing someone's livelihood and someone else's home. I just want to say this, this land is not included in bond referendum money. Every yes vote on this board tonight is taking something away from some one. I do not understand why we keep buying land that we do not need and overpaying for land. So, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to divide the question and vote on each piece of property separately.
Okay. We have a motion from Ms. Garris to divide the two pieces of property into two votes. Does Ms. Garris have a second? Okay, the motion fails. Are there any other questions or comments, Board? I have a couple of questions. Mr. Salters, tell us, how did you find this land? Because I don't remember.
Madam Chair, we did an extensive search of the area, in which we reviewed multiple tracts of land with the board. And I'm not going to identify them right now, but we viewed tracts of land across I-20, closer to the Lexington area. We reviewed tracts of land down South Lake Drive, and we reviewed this tract of land and other tracts of land on Two-Not's Road. This tract of land actually had a for-sale sign on it, and that's how it came to my attention. After, you know, I studied the Lexington County GIS, and, you know, identify potential properties, then we go out and ride and look at the properties. And as I rode by this site, there was a for-sale sign on the property.
Okay, thank you. And since Ms. Garris did bring up the question about the DOT requirements for two driveways, can you walk us through that?
We did a site assessment and traffic study, traffic impact study with SCDOT, and our civil engineer, and the layout that was presented, I'll just go back to this layout right here. This layout is the agreed-upon layout that was the most cost-effective and safe layout determined by DOT in cooperation with our civil engineer. And I did want to make one point of clarification. The Lexington Middle School site actually does have two entrances to that site. Ms. Garris said there was one entrance. We were actually trying to get a third entrance to that campus, just as a point of clarification.
Any other questions, Board?
Yes, so, thank you. So, we were told that we had to buy the second piece of property for LMS for an additional entrance, I guess I should say. But come to find out, they were saying we needed one on the backroad Cherokee Trail, that they couldn't all be on Old Cherokee, but we found out that wasn't true. So, I'm just not buying it, that we need this additional property here. And when he mentioned the most cost-effective, well, here's what the board needs. The board needs all of these options in front of us. Then we decide what's cost-effective and what's work, and what works, and we have figures in front of us, instead of, here's our one option, here's what's going to work. We were presented with one piece of land, and there were others discussed, but when we came back months ago, and I even took notes back then, one hadn't came up for sale, there was never contact made with the landowner, we didn't get anywhere with negotiations. So, at the end of the day, we had one piece of property brought to us. We have one-site design, and we're being told that DOT says this is all that can work. And like I said, I'm just not buying it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garris. Is there anything else, Board? I just also want to say, this summer, I had the opportunity to ride the buses and deliver food, and every bus driver that I rode with is so excited about this. This is such a feather in their cap, because where they are now, we have that huge drainage issue. I think they have to walk through so much water, and I think they even have to reposition the buses, you said, when we were having a big rainstorm because the drainage is so poor on that land. And they were all very excited about this. Ms. Green?
Why not? I can just kind of emphasize what Mr. Salters said about the property on Bar Road and those portables that they've been using as offices. I mean, I was a student at Lexington High School in the mid-eighties, and those, I mean, that's like a landmark out there that, and they've not moved or changed or improved in appearance in thirty-five years. And so, I think that an updated, adequate transportation facility is long overdue for what has tripled in attendance size. And so, I appreciate the efforts that you've gone to, to find. I was out at this property on Friday, and I think it's supremely suitable for what we were looking for. So, thank you.
And the other thing is, how long do you perceive, or what do you think, how long will we use this site? Because based on Pelearian, former high school, now Pelearian Middle, Gilbert High School, which now was Gilbert Elementary, how long have we used those pieces of property? And I'll be honest, I foresee this one being exactly just like that.
So, a site like this, it will position this district for fifty-plus years, because there is growth potential on this site. So, when we add another twenty buses to this campus, we're not pigeonholed because we don't have enough land to add more parking for the buses or more parking for the employees. And that's the intent of being able to grow the campus as it stands. So, this really will position us for, you know, the district for fifty years. I mean, and, you know, we can expand the building, we can add more parking, more wash bays, more mechanic bays off the back of the building. So, there's a lot of flexibility we have on this campus. Additionally, you know, much like we did with the new Providence land, where the district bought, you know, a parcel of land, and then at some point, recognized that they were not going to use that land, they carved it off and sold the land. If at some point down the road, the district decides, you know what, we're never going to grow any bigger, or we don't need this for to relocate a maintenance facility or some other facility, it can be subdivided and used for another purpose and sold. I did want to point out that in the due diligence process, we do a Phase One environmental study, and if there's nothing in the area identified, you don't move to Phase Two. In this case, there were several suspect items. Vent pipes are a typical trigger that shows that you might have an underground storage tank. And so, you move to, we move to a Phase Two environmental study, to do due diligence, to make sure that things, that hazards that were affecting this development would not impact us. And we got a clear letter from our environmental consultant stating that this facility and this site is safe to develop on, and is not going to be a problem. And so, that's that process and how that works.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
And I just, Mr. Salters, you said something when you were talking about the longevity of this piece that I had not really even thought about. But, you know, five years ago, we didn't know that we were going to need a propane filling station at our bus facility.
Correct.
And we don't know if five, ten, twenty years from now, what sort of fuel sources our buses are going to be using. And I think having some flexibilities and some space to grow and adapt that property is not a bad thing, because I felt, you know, it just seems like we're, new technology is, you know, growing exponentially. And I think that includes, I mean, diesel's been around a long time. And so, I just think that there's some potential for some big changes in how our buses are fueled. And so, I think that this is not a bad thing to have some extra space.
Well, and I've been on employee relation kicks tonight, whether it's Ms. Gaskins or Mr. Robertson. But I do think when you build a facility, that demonstrates respect for that profession. And I think just two years ago, we were in this room talking about where are we going to find bus drivers, and we had to start a school year without, quite frankly enough, bus drivers. But y'all did a great job and did the work to hire them. So, I do think from an employee retention, as well as professional development, this demonstrates our commitment to our bus drivers. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of things. I'd like to respond to that. Mr. Salters mentioned that we bought more land than needed at New Providence than we sold it. If I recall, we paid fifty, over fifty thousand dollars an acre for that land, and we sold it to Mungo for thirty-something thousand dollars an acre. And in Phase Two, he said we got site clearance. Well, like I mentioned, I mean, they gave us so much site clearance from Phase One to Phase Two that the pictures they had of septic tanks, water supply wells in Phase Two, they said that they couldn't find any of that. So, how do things just disappear? I mean, there's no evidence of them, but yet there were pictures there in Phase One. And y'all say this is going to last fifty-plus years, and you can add on to it. Well, if our buildings are maintained, this might just last us fifty years. But as we've seen, we're tearing down, you know, parts of Gilbert Elementary School now, parts of Pelearian Middle School.
That were built when Truman and Eisenhower were president.
Okay, if they were maintained, they'd still be here for another fifty years. But we need to put maintenance staff in our budget. I mean, these buildings have to be maintained. And, I mean, I'm glad the bus drivers are getting new building. I'm sure they're happy too. As far as professional development and how this makes them feel, imagine how they felt for the last forty years that they've stood knee-deep in mud, get on their bus when they're parked down at the end of the bus lot. I mean, these are things that should have been taken care of years ago, and I'm glad it's happening, but it's happening all over the district. I mean, there are needs that still aren't being attended to.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garris. Anything else, Board? Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Oswald. We have a second from Ms. Green. All in favor of the property contractual matter related to the bus transportation facility, purchasing two parcels of land from Royal Properties LLC and Royal Holdings One LLC. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have four in favor and two opposed, and the motion carries. And start building, Mr. Salters.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to go to ten point O, which are action items. We are now going to ten point one, which is second reading from Title IX policy. Do I hear a motion for the Board to approve Policy AXX Title IX, which provides a structured grievance process for sexual harassment as outlined in and required by new federal regulations accompanying Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of nineteen-seventy-two?
Madam Chair, attached, please find Policy AXX Title IX for second reading and adoption. A move that the Board approved Policy AXX Title IX. This is a new standalone Title IX policy, which provides a structured grievance process for sexual harassment as outlined in and required by new federal regulations accompanying Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of nineteen-seventy-two.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. We now have a motion and a second on the floor. And Mr. Stacy, you want to walk us through this one, please?
Okay, so, basically, y'all received this in first reading last month, and we're just asking for it to be adopted. I've shared this with attorney firms. The policy was developed using a blend of language in the South Carolina School Board Association's model policy, and a draft policy was presented to the law firm of Halligan, Mahoney, and Williams. And it's been edited for our purposes, and we have already started, this all went into effect August fifteenth, or fourteenth, and we've already started the process of training. As you read through the policy, you'll note that there has to be training provided for coordinators, investigators, decision-makers, informal resolution facilitators, and appeal decision-makers. And so, we have worked through, we've begun that process now. We've had over a hundred and fifty people participate in an overview for what this represents and how this works. On Thursday, September tenth, we had seven people participate in a coordinator training. We had, Monday, yesterday, we had over forty people participate in an informal resolution facilitator training. We have the investigator training for tomorrow, and we'll do the decision-making training on Friday, September eighteenth. And so, we feel pretty good about the progress that we've made towards implementation of this process. And if it's adopted tonight, then we will move forward. We're getting the information on our website, which is a part of the law, and identify the coordinators and have that information available to the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Stacy?
Just one question. How much does our proposed policy differ from the model policy after it went through the attorneys? I mean, was there anything of huge substance, or was it more nuanced?
It was pretty much what we did with Meredith, and Meredith can answer this probably better than I can, but she took the policy that the School Boards Association presented. She took the policy, Halligan and Mahoney and Williams had presented a policy for the districts that they serve. She put those two together. She had already started working on writing a policy, and literally, and I will say that when she shared it with Alan Smith, our attorney, he goes, "Man, this is really good. I'll probably take some of this." So, I feel like it really does reflect what we want to do. And, does that answer the question?
Yeah, so, I take it it's a blend of the two things. I mean, it wasn't changing a her-to and a there-for and all those things. It was, there was actually some substance in there.
The School Board's model policy is not a standalone.
You know, I'm speaking in high court. The School Board's policy, let me think. The School Board's model policy is not a standalone policy that addresses just Title IX. They took the existing sexual harassment policies for students and for staff and added to those. So, that's where the difference comes in on the model policy. There's, wumps all sexual harassment together, whether it's Title IX or not sexual harassment, that doesn't rise to the level of Title IX. They put that all in one policy. We have separated it out.
Gotcha, gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, this is an action item. We'll take a vote. All in favor of the second reading of the Title IX policy as presented by Mr. Stacy, our Chief Human Resources Officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. We now go to eleven point O, which is a superintendent's report, and I want to turn it over to Dr. Little. And Board, this is for information only.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's, I really am excited to have Mr. Gallagher here tonight. Before we get to him, I just want to remind you that this week, we are gathering lots of feedback. We've sent out two surveys, one to parents, one to staff. We have had a support staff advisory committee on Friday. We took feedback from them. We did our parent advisory council last night, and that was the first time we had done a focus group via Zoom. That was very interesting. Thank you to Ms. Halliday for arranging that. And tomorrow, we are going to do principals and teachers. We're going to bring all that data together at the end of the week, and we'll have a presentation for you next week about reentry version two point O and have some discussion about that. We are going to meet next Tuesday night, September twenty-second. So, be prepared for that. And that's really going to be the rest of our week. And you saw tonight, a number of impassioned pleas about how we need to move forward in both directions, about should we move forward and stay in the hybrid model? Should we move forward and add days to the face-to-face, and how that should look? So, we're going to be discussing that and be talking to the Board next week. So, continue to provide feedback. I know we're getting lots of emails about that, and that is a really great thing to have people give their opinion about what's coming up. So, beyond that, now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gallagher, or actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters and have him introduce our special guest, because we have tremendous news tonight, and this is going to be really exciting. And I just want, I don't want to step on the news, but Mr. Gallagher, we're so thankful for your hard-working effort on our behalf, and in terms of helping us manage funds at a very high level. So, Mr. Salters?
I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this tonight, and also, you know, want to thank Mr. Gallagher for toughening it out and being here at five after ten on a Tuesday night to deliver this report to you guys. We have, you authorized us to do a bond, do a bond resolution, and do a bond sale recently, and we felt like the outcome of that sale, and the timing of everything that was involved warranted an update to the Board and to the public about where we stand. So, Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to turn it over to you. I actually do have the clicker, and I can drive. Okay.
You can drive.
All right. And Board, I know there was a copy or two left in the boardroom, but I have a copy of Mr. Gallagher's presentation, if, yes.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, the Board, Dr. Little, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I was here with you about a year ago, and we went over the results from your first sale of your referendum program from two thousand and eighteen. If we look at the page two of the handout, we received five bids when we sold these bonds two weeks ago. Citigroup Capital Markets came in with the lowest rate of a one-point-nine-three-three. One-point-nine-three-three to borrow money for twenty-five years. That is amazingly cheap. Some key points there. We closed on the issue this morning, so the money's in the bank over at the county treasurer's office for you. So the money's in the bank over at the county treasurer's office for you. It's 25 years. One of the things is the net re-offering premium yielded an additional just under $6.5 million. The project fund deposit was $161 million, broken down to $155,980 for your referendum. Because you needed to make your installment purchase revenue bond payments, we added that into this as well. And we added your annual capital maintenance to save you in cost of issuance. So all that was done and combined into this bond issue. So you'll have $5,250,000 going into what's known as your 8% money for capital projects. Next page. The only thing I really want to highlight here, the district enjoys a AA2 rating from Moody's or a double A rating from Standard and Poor's. Exceptionally high credit, which is a result of why you received the strong bids that you did for your bond issue. Part of that goes back to the very conservative fiscal measures, maintaining an adequate general fund, budgets within your means. Those things all factor into these credit ratings. Not to mention a great community with very good economy. That helps out a lot. Okay. Thing that's really probably the most exciting about all of this is, we've been at 90 mils last year. We're going to be at 90 this year. You've got the ability to, within your program, drop down to 87.6 or roughly 88 mils going forward. Key components in that, we still have room for this next $50 million to be issued, which would be done next year. And you've also got money that's factored in for annual capital maintenance. And so you can make those decisions, whether you want to be below. But the thing that's most exciting is, we're going to be substantially below the target. And that original target, and when you went out and had your referendum, that number was 99 mils. Y'all were going to go up about 15 mils. So it's pretty exciting to see that we were able to do that. If we flip over to the next page.
And just before you turn, I just wanted to point out that this year, we were supposed to go in the schedule to 95 mils. And so not only are we not going to 95, we're able to stay at 90. So, and of course, then the next year, we would have jumped to 99. So that's really exciting to not have to do that.
And remind us again, the cost of a mil to the taxpayer?
$4, $4 per mil on an owner-occupied home, $6 on a car.
Per 100,000, right?
Per 100,000.
Yes.
Okay. If we look over the next page, last year, we locked in $165 million at 2.519. I thought that was incredibly low. This year, we come in at a 1.93. You know, a couple of things that factored into how this whole program is being able to be brought in at 10 mils below. You authorized a couple of refundings. Each of those refundings shaved a mil off each. So we did a refunding in 19 and a refunding in 20. And one of the other factors that's come in is the assessment growth. We were very, very conservative in our model. We didn't want to get out there and worry about if the growth doesn't materialize, then we got to raise mils above that. So we were very, very conservative. Assessment numbers that came in this year came in very, very strong. We still left a little bit of what we call a COVID buffer this year. That way, if collections do not materialize like we think, like they are supposed to later this year, we've got a little bit of room that we're able to not have an issue next year. The remaining piece of the referendum, like I said, we've got $50 million left, and that would be anticipated to be issued next year about this time.
Can you remind me of the relationship between interest rate and bond? I mean, typically, the rule of thumb is when interest rate in a right, in a rising interest rate environment, bonds are good. And a stable interest rate are falling, the bond rate goes down, which is, of course, in our favor, you know, that the bond rate goes down. Does that typically hold true for this?
Everything's out the window right now.
Gotcha.
Everything's out the window as far as that's concerned.
So there is no correlation that we can tell?
Usually, bad news means yields on bonds drop is to your benefit. But right now, rates are so, so low and so compressed because of everything that has happened this past year.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Looking at your debt structure, wanted to highlight one thing. If you look in column K, annual maintenance bonds, we do have $5,250,000 budgeted each year for annual maintenance. That way, you can plan your projects if there are other things that you want and things that you need that are outside of your referendum program. You do have a recurring source of funds for those. Also can fund technology purchases and things of those sorts.
And that's backed into the slide two before, this graph for the projected.
Yes, sir. That is already included, or if you want to say baked in there, the yellow at the top.
And that keeps it below the 8%, right? Because we've got to keep those.
That's well within your 8% debt limit.
Right, okay.
And as you recall, some of you have been on the Board a while, may recall that we've never really had that. And that's why we've had to go referendum to referendum. And so one of the goals in the 18 program was to establish that funding stream so that we can do the annual maintenance, like Ms. Garris referred to earlier on, on buildings, and not have to wait for a large referendum to make things like that happen. So that's the goal of that funding stream. And of course, the initial usage of some of that funding is to maintain our technology infrastructure and also the original $393 million program. We backed out a number of HVAC projects and things like that to get down to 365. And we kind of rolled those into this funding stream to be able to accomplish those things outside of a referendum. So it gives you the ability to do those things along and along.
And to maintain our technology platform.
And to maintain the technology platform.
So I mean.
Well, you can see how important that is now.
Yeah. And I remember, it was probably Dr. Woodward's evaluation. That was some of the feedback we gave, was that we need a sustainable capital funding model for the technology platform that we'd rolled out.
Right.
This is good.
And you're going to have other questions. But one thing that I want Mike just to say one more time is, Mike, can you address the bond premium that we've achieved over these two sales? That number was some $22 million, I think we talked about between the two.
Yeah, we got about $6.5 million from this issue, and I think we were around $17 million on the last issue. So that is additional monies that went into your project bond.
And I had to ask the O, because I had to sign all this, you know, about a week, two weeks ago. And again, that's the premium that the issuer provided us when the bonds were issued, because they in turn sell them to other investors, right? Or how would you explain that in layman's terms?
In simple terms, it's this. It's the difference between the coupon and the yield. The purchasers of the bonds want a set interest rate. And it may be 5% typically out to the call date. And then from the call date on, it was like twos and threes. The fact of the matter is, is the yield in the first year was probably about 17 basis points. So they're willing to give you prepaid interest. I'm going to pay you money today, so you will pay me 5% down the road.
So is it an arbitrage, basically?
No.
It's not an arbitrage?
No, sir. It's prepaid interest.
Okay. And so it's additional funds available to the program?
And I'm going to, I am not business-minded. I've never taken a business course in my whole life, other than one economics class in college. But I'm going to try to connect the dots. So, excuse, I'm going to make this very simple. So because our district has sound fiscal management, and we maintain a fund balance that not only is healthy and appropriate, but it's stable. We don't take in and out of it. We maintain the fund balance. That in turn gives us a very solid credit rating so that when we go to the market, our money makes us money, basically.
It saves you money.
It saves us money. Okay, thank you.
And we go through a ratings process with these rating agencies and do interviews, and they evaluate our financials and our fiscal practices. And, I mean, that happens every time. And we sit on these ratings calls. And the most recent ones have all been around our response to COVID and how we've handled COVID and what the impact of COVID has been to our district. That's been their most important discussion point. And again, each time we've had these calls, they've been, well, obviously, the ratings show it. They've been very pleased with our financial strategies and practices to make it through this stuff.
But you have, I mean, when you have something fantastic, like what Mike has told us about, you have to go back four or five steps in our financial management process to yield that benefit. Because it really, I mean, we have conversations all the time about our fund balance and the importance of it, and how important it is to keep it stable. And I think this is very good evidence of why those conversations are important and why that fund balance is just critical for the financial health of not only our district, but our community. Because, I mean, we've saved money.
Lots of money.
Lots of money, lots of money.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. We appreciate you driving up from Charleston to give us that wonderful news. That's great news. Okay, at this time, Board, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Gallagher before he heads down 26?
Yes, I have a question. I just want to say, this speaks volumes to our finance department as well and the work y'all have done. This is great. Thank you so much. Mr. Gallagher, this, I may have addressed this even further down, but since you're here, and we just, Mr. Salters just mentioned technology infrastructure. During a conference last week, they talked about acquisition, use, and security agreements as a way to fund a technology refresh. Is that anything we use?
No, ma'am. It's not something this district has used. I can't even remember the last time if any equipment was leased.
We, I'd have to go back and look at the specific year. But we did a lease, guys. It was when we first started rolling out devices early on. And the issue that happened is those lease payments had to come out of general fund. And the pressure on the general fund to use other operating expenses, like teacher salaries, squeezed that payment stream, the priority for that out, and pushed it over to the capital side. But it's been a number of years ago since we've done something like that.
Okay. Is that something worth looking into for the future?
I think, can I say something? Because it's kind of my history. When we first started buying devices, they were so expensive. And they have come down so dramatically. A Chromebook, I mean, it just doesn't compare to what we initially purchased when we first started doing all that. So I'm not sure you want to lease something that.
Well, that is true. I mean, some of the devices that we're buying now, the residual value of them is not what they used to be. I mean, we were paying, you know, $1,000, $1,200 for a device, you know, 15 years ago. And now we're paying $300 for a Chromebook. So that is a valid point. It is still a way to, you know, to stretch your dollars. But you have to be, as I said, careful about how you make those payments, because it does impact your general fund, which typically is more stressed, I guess.
Well, and the other issue is who's the tax basis? So again, the general fund operation comes, it's either the legislature or businesses. And we raise mileage on businesses. For capital, that's owner-occupied houses, where most, obviously, our kids are coming from, generally, in their property.
And business.
Yeah, and businesses. But we pull the houses into it. So again, to me, a device is supposed to be used more than a year. So by default, it's capital. And the very tax base that benefits from it is paying for it. So to me, it makes sense to come out of capital.
Right, I understand. But in here, I mean, the lady giving this was at a, you know, a lot of experience in finances. And it's not a lease. It says at the end of the term of the agreement, the school district owns all of the equipment.
Correct.
Anyway, so.
It's a great program. The way your program's set up, you're able to use general obligation bonds. And you're set up to be able to do that. GEO bonds are going to give you the lowest cost of capital. The equipment acquisition agreement is going to be a non-appropriation credit. So you're going to have to make a choice each year. Are you going to issue bonds to make the payment? Well, if you're going to issue bonds to make the payment, and you've got plenty of 8% debt limit, then there's no real good reason to do an equipment acquisition and use agreement for technology purchases.
Okay, that was my question.
It's a tool that's in the bag. But for your program, it's not a tool that we would recommend using or think that you would need to be using.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you all. Y'all have a great night. Congratulations.
Great news. You can come back anytime with news like that. We're now going to go to 12.0, which is new business. And the, Dr. Powers, Ms. Garris, Mr. Oswald, Ms. Green, and I all attended the Virtual School Law Conference on August 21st, 22nd. And I was going to ask, Ms. Green, she is our government relations representative. If she would just kind of guide us on a little update on what we learned. And Ms. Green?
Sure. And usually, this conference was a lot different this year than it usually is. It was focused a lot more on federal law than local stuff. And almost all of it was COVID-related. We had an update on a number of Supreme Court cases that are kind of getting close to their place in the pipeline, that are all, have the potential to affect schools and school policy and education rights and things like that. And then we talked, a lot of it was COVID-related, about sports and extracurriculars during the pandemic and student employment issues during the pandemic. I did want to, and also IDEA and just all the issues associated with those services during the, you know, virtual and the shutdown and things like that. We also, I think several of us probably attended the webinars recently. There have been two that the School Board Association has done. One was an entire hour about FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education. You could actually talk for a full hour about FAP. Actually, you probably could talk for several days about FAP. And that was very interesting. And then, as Ms. Garris said, there was a webinar last week about basically the capital funds toolbox that is available to school districts. And that one was really in the weeds. But it was super interesting, because I'm convinced that you can never learn everything there is to know about school finance and how to pay for projects. One of the things I did want to mention as part of this is usually at the School Law Conference, a big portion of time is spent talking about what the South Carolina General Assembly is going to be tackling. And right now, we're, in fact, the House was supposed to take up the budget today. And I was just texting with Kathy Manus, and they did not. The Senate did have the second reading of budget, and they passed it. And the House may or may not take it up tomorrow. And as you know, the governor has asked them not to. And the Speaker tends to do what the governor asks. But we're crossing our fingers, because it's very important. I mean, in my opinion, the General Assembly, the most important thing they do is pass a budget each year. And to just continue under the continuing resolution creates a lot of problems for us. Not only does it keep the step increase off the table, but it also, one of the things that the Senate did, which was very responsible, is in their budget, they put $500 million in a set aside, because there's a, if things get worse with COVID after Election Day, the General Assembly is not permitted to come back and do any business after Election Day, because new people will have been elected. And so there will be this dead zone for a couple of months. And if for some reason, there's a huge spike in the state or there's some, you know, unexpected need, the Senate has responsibly set money aside to address that in the event that there's basically a leadership vacuum for a couple of months. So that's kind of all out there. The House is going to meet tomorrow. If you have contact information for our House members, send them a text in the morning and say, "Hey, you really need to take up the budget. We, you know, we would really like that step increase to happen." I was going to ask, because the step increase is 50/50 right now, if there was a possibility of some sort of, you know, our teachers have really, just actually, all of our staff, our school staff, the school bus drivers, the food service, our administrators. I can't imagine, I'm exhausted, and I'm not living it 24/7 like y'all are. And I just think it would be, especially if we can't get a step increase this year, if we could do some sort of a bonus for our staff members. A one-time thing, you know, the dilemma with a step increase is that we tie, if it's not funded by the state, we tie ourselves to that cost ongoing. But it sure will be, I think, a morale builder for our staff. But it sure will be, I think, a morale builder for our staff, and well-deserved for the, just, I mean, the, as Dr. Smith said, the yeoman's work that they have done for the last few months. So I don't know, Mr. Salters, I'm putting that, this big idea to you, but I think, especially with a step increase being anything but certain at this point in time, if we could get some information about possibly doing something to, you know, kind of thank our staff and, you know, be there for them, at least a little bit financially.
Sure, we'll be happy to evaluate that and get back to you.
Surprise.
Ms. Green, kind of, what were you thinking about? What kind of dollars?
I mean, I don't really know what, a one-time thing, you know, a thousand dollars of, you know, that's a nice number that's significant, and it would mean something, and I think it would make a big difference. And it really is, I mean, I, they just, you know, we always talk about pay, and, you know, we want, we would, if we could, and if we had unlimited, you know, funds, we would, you know, certainly raise the pay of everybody all the time, because our staff, they deserve it. Their value to our mission is just unmeasurable. And so if we could do something that, you know, affirms them and thanks them for the work that they have done for the last few months, and, you know.
Well, even the parents that spoke tonight talked about our teachers and our staff are essential workers during this COVID-nineteen.
I mean, it's just, you know, I listened into all the testimony during the citizens' participation, you know, every single, I mean, I don't sleep well at night, because I'm thinking about, you know, should we do this, or should we do that? And I'm not, you know, I keep picturing the old video game like Super Mario Brothers, where it's like the little guy's just running, 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 and he's having to leap and having to jump, and the game never ends. You just keep, and I just feel like that's the way it's been for the last six months, and I know Dr. Little and his staff feel that way. And so just anything that we could do, just to say, you know, we can't give you a break, but we can at least give you some appreciation, so.
Well, and two years ago, three years ago, we started an intentional journey with our budgeting process to raise teacher salaries, and we can't go out of step to the legislature. And I, I mean, I guess I understand why the legislature's doing what they're doing, but, but since they have decided to not pass a budget giving us a step increase, I think it'd be irresponsible for us to do a step increase without being locked tight, because that is an annual funding. That being said, I do think if we have enough room in our budget, a one-time bonus that would equal this year's step increase, at least that, or close to it, would make sense, and I'd be in support of that.
I think that's a great idea, too. That's why I voted down the budget, is because there wasn't a step increase, and even Kyle, way back then, mentioned a bonus. So I'm glad to see, the closer we get to November third, we have some other board members hopping on board.
I can't support a step increase, because I can't do a tax increase to our constituents.
Do you know how much money we have left over every year that goes out of our general fund into our capital fund?
Yeah, but I just, it just wouldn't, I just can't do it with so many people out of work and furloughed, and just would be a hard year. Well, Jeff, if you'll just kind of get, see what's in, what's left over in the budget, and how you can work that out and report back to us, we would definitely love to follow up on Ms. Green's idea.
We'll be glad to do that.
Okay. At this time, thank you, Ms. Green. Did anybody want to add anything about that conference, other than what Ms. Green talked about?
They had a very good session on Title IX. Like, I learned a lot about.
But did learn a lot.
I mean, that was like drinking, anyhow, it was good.
Yeah. Okay, and I wanted to share that Anne Marie and I attended the Lexington County Council Midlands Strong, which is, we've got these, what are these things called? Yeah, cling. And if anybody wants some, I've got some extra ones. But we attended with, pretty much from all over the Midlands, all the mayors, all the police chiefs, all the sheriffs, all the legislators, school board members, county council, city council, and first responders. We had a lot of first responders. Lexington Medical Center had a huge presence, and it was just basically a thank you for what everyone's done in the Midlands to rally around COVID-nineteen and what we've done for our community. It was a really nice event. It was just a little get-together one morning, and it was hot as Hades. And we were all, it was almost a hundred, and we're all dressed up with our masks on, standing in the sun. So it was not a long meeting, I will tell you that. Board thirteen point oh, items for Board information. For information only, we have your monthly general fund financial report for July twenty twenty. We have your monthly general fund budget transfers for July twenty twenty. We have your monthly capital projects report for July twenty twenty. We have your monthly unauthorized procurement's reports for July twenty twenty. We also have our quarterly grants award report. And at this time, I would like to wish Mr. Anderson, he is still recuperating from his surgery, and he was not able to be with us tonight, because he's just, he's just having a hard time. So if y'all will keep Mr. Anderson in your thoughts and prayers, and he said, hopefully, he's going to try his best to be at the next meeting or two. And then, our last item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Oswald. All in favor, please stand up, and we will see you next Tuesday night.